Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the
Thank you to this panel.
Thank you.
We'll now hear from the next panel. Freddie Goldstein, Jeff Berman, Peter Mazur, KJ Singh, Michael Ring. Get binicky whenever you're ready, Freddie Goldstein.
Sorry. Okay. Good morning, Chair Brooks Powers and members of the committee. My name is Freddie Goldstein and I'm testifying today in support of Intro 1050. This bill is really about the drivers. It is the drivers who pay for their insurance in New York City, and it is the drivers who bear the cost of unnecessary high insurance requirements. New York City four higher vehicle drivers are required to carry four times more personal injury protection insurance than any other driver on the road. And yet TLC data tells us that their rate of serious crash is extremely low. In fact, in 2024, the TLC reported fewer than one serious crashes per month on average for four higher vehicle drivers. Further, this coverage is largely duplicative. Uber and Lyft drivers are covered by the Black Car Fund, which pays out before personal injury protection. Since the Black Car Fund pays out first, drivers have even less need for PIP than other New York drivers. Additionally, passengers, pedestrians, and other drivers would be covered under a driver's liability insurance, which covers $100,000 per person and would not be impacted by this legislation. While we do not have data for New York City specifically, we know that in New York State, where we cover the insurance on behalf of drivers, 98% of settled claims were for under $50,000 for accidents from 2021 and 2022. New York City's for-hire vehicle market is in crisis, an issue that primarily must be addressed by the state. So far, the governor's solution is for insurers to raise rates. Since 2024, drivers have already seen anywhere from a 10% to 20% increase on average. The governor's budget makes clear this is just the beginning. Drivers will continue to see large rate increases for years to come. Reducing PIP requirements from $200,000 to $50,000 per person is the only related action the council can take, and it would save drivers around $600 annually. I hope you pass 1050 on behalf of drivers, riders, and the millions of New Yorkers who rely on for-hire vehicles. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, members of the committee. My name is Peter Mazur, and I am general counsel to the Metropolitan Taxi Cab Board of Trade, a 72-year-old trade association representing owners and operators of licensed medallion taxi cabs. Our full-service driver centers provide representation of drivers leasing cabs in more than 12,000 adjudications. The New York City medallion industry is an integral part of the city's mass transportation system. We service areas not reachable by bus and subway, yet we receive not a penny in government subsidy. In fact, each passenger riding a cab in the central business district of Manhattan already pays $3.75 of its fare to the MTA. That's more than the cost of a bus and subway ride. And while ridership has been down in the industry, expenses have continued to increase. And today, I want to address two areas where the city council can be of help. Cabs and other vehicles for higher must maintain higher liability and no-fault insurance limits than vehicles, other vehicles licensed in New York State. This is because of TLC regulations, which you've heard about already. However, these higher limits of insurance have been a magnet for fraud on the part of unscrupulous claimants, their medical providers, and unethical attorneys. The fraud is so rampant that it has jeopardized the stability of the for-hire insurance industry. The high cost of insurance premiums has been devastating to the taxi industry. Recently, both Uber and a major insurance carrier in the for-hire industry have filed separate lawsuits in federal court against some of these perpetrators. I, these suits highlight the types of fraudulent claim activity burdening for-hire vehicle insurance carriers and the scope of the problem. Lowering mandatory minimum insurance limits to those applicable to other vehicles, including for-hire vehicles elsewhere in the state, would discourage some of these fraudulent practices. Intro 1050, under consideration today, would help achieve this result by prohibiting the TLC from mandating higher limits. Persons injured in accidents would still be protected as the TLC in the state both strictly enforce mandate insurance coverage. We, excuse me, we urge the passage of Intro 1050.
Can I just ask that you wrap up, please?
Yeah, if I could just have one more minute, just to address the concern that we had with the high cost of accessible vehicles, which are up to $90,000 each, and the fact that the Taxi and Limousine Commission will be, has provided some funding, but is eliminating a large amount of the funding that's available, including subsidies to drivers, continuing payments to owners, and debt hit money that was available to drivers who transport passengers with accessibilities, and the elimination of the Accessible Dispatch Program, which members of the accessible community have already talked about. We urge the city council to find some funding that could restore some of these cuts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we ask that if folks have more testimony beyond the two minutes, you can definitely submit the remaining testimony in writing. I have yours, so I'll be able to read it with more intent. Thank you. Microphone, please.
There we go. Chair Brooks Power, members of the committee. I'm Jeff Berman, Director of Public Policy at Lyft. Nice to speak to you this afternoon. I'd also like to express my gratitude to Councilmember Carmen De La Rosa for her leadership in sponsoring this critical legislation. As you've heard, currently TLC drivers are required to carry $200,000 in PIP coverage, four times the amount for TNC drivers and personal call drivers throughout the rest of New York State. That's a requirement. There's nothing, if the coverage limit is lowered to $50,000, that would prevent somebody who feels they want more coverage from buying more. We're simply saying eliminate the requirement. The excess requirement places an undue financial burden on for-hire vehicle drivers, making it increasingly difficult for them to afford necessary insurance premiums. Lowering the PIP requirement to $50,000 would align TLC coverage with that of other rideshare drivers and personal vehicle owners, reducing costs for drivers while maintaining sufficient protection. In three ways. It would reduce duplication of coverage. As you've heard, for-hire vehicle drivers in New York already receive benefits largely duplicative of PIP coverage through the Black Car Fund or through workers' compensation. It would combat insurance fraud. The high no-fault limits incentivize fraudulent claims, which drive up costs for insurers and in turn for drivers. Lowering the limits would help mitigate these abuses. And it would encourage market competition. The diminishing availability of commercial auto insurance in New York City poses a growing risk to the industry. Excessive insurance requirements discourage new carriers from entering the market, reducing competition and further increasing costs. A reduction in PIP requirements would help stabilize the market and create more affordable insurance for drivers. The current state of commercial auto insurance in New York City creates significant challenges for for-hire vehicle drivers, including Uber, Lyft, and yellow taxis, while no single policy solution will change or fully resolve these challenges. Lowering these requirements is smart, practical, and necessary. I urge the city council to support this important reform, to bring much-needed relief to licensed drivers. Thank you for your time and consideration.
How do you see this bill combating fraud?
The way it's been explained to me is that when you have coverage limits that are higher than needed, there's now a pot of money that nefarious actors find alluring and try to go after.
And who would those actors be? Is it the driver or the victim?
The alleged victim or their attorneys.
Now, in the instance where, as the commissioner used the example earlier, in terms of the Times Square crash, and there were about six victims in that crash that no one anticipated happening, do you think that $50,000 would cover the six victims sufficiently?
First of all, there's the Black Car Fund, which, which covers, which provides significant coverage for death or bodily injury.
The Black Car Fund insurance covers what exactly?
I don't want to speak out of term, but what I know is that there's $100,000 driver death benefit. There's illness insurance.
But for the passenger or a pedestrian that is involved in a crash, does that insurance fund cover them?
Ma'am, I can answer this.
Please.
The Black Car Fund is specific to the driver, so it would not cover injured passengers or pedestrians, but the liability insurance would. So there's $100,000 per person available from that pot of insurance. And I just want to clarify that with the PIP reduction, the $50,000 would be available per person. It wouldn't be expected to cover all six through one $50,000 pot.
Which is fine, but if there's a severe injury, and I think back to Commissioner Curry, the Commissioner for the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities, and her injuries that were sustained from a crash within an ethi-should be, actually, those were long and enduring impacts that she received through that crash. And so the doctor's visits well exceeded $50,000. So what gets activated? And I would argue it goes past $150,000. So what else is in the, you know, what else is, are the drivers able to use to be able to cover this so that it doesn't kick over to someone who, you know, was a victim in it all?
If I could, in other states, including the rest of New York State, if somebody's injured and passes away, a passenger or a pedestrian, you know, the cost to their, to their life and their medical injuries is no different than in New York City, or certainly not four times much as so. And so I think the problem here is if you're requiring people to buy a level of insurance that only applies to the outlier case and requiring the other 90-some percent of people to purchase excessive coverage.
And if I may add one, one thing to this mix. The $200,000 coverage in PIP is not available to pedestrians. It's only available to passengers, to motorists and other vehicles. Pedestrians are limited to $50,000 in PIP coverage.
Thank you for that clarification, even though I am focused on all. But thank you for that clarification. Does liability insurance cover riders and pedestrians when the driver is not at fault?
Well, I'll answer that. No-fault is exactly what it says. It covers everybody that's eligible to be covered irrespective of fault. So if you're in a cab and the other motorist is at fault, no-fault will cover you. If you're a pedestrian, whichever car was involved in, you don't have to determine who was at fault. Did the car go through a red light, or did this car make a turn? Did this car come too close to be? If you're hit, you'll be covered, and it doesn't really matter. It doesn't matter, we don't assess liability. That's the point of no-fault.
And the panel before this panel were a panel that included drivers that were clear that they did not feel this would be helpful. They had concerns about what that meant for them in the event of a crash. And so hearing from the drivers directly, you know, I just want to give an opportunity for you to respond to the concerns that they raised.
I was listening to them, and my reaction was that oftentimes people purchase insurance beyond the limit of what they're required to purchase because they feel that they would rather spend more money and lower their risk even for an unlikely event. And people are welcome to do that. What we're talking about is what the required minimum coverage is, not putting a cap on some maximum. So if you're a driver who wants to make sure you're covered for some unlikely scenario, you can purchase more insurance.
Even though the mass amount of drivers, if they're not required, likely not, because there are some that would like to cut costs. But then that goes into my next question.
I agree with you. That's why the bill would be a good thing.
So my next question is, if we were to reduce no-fault insurance, then does that put passengers at more risk?
No, because we believe that there is both sufficient additional coverage through liability, which would cover, and the question you were asking about earlier, liability would step in and cover.
And that's the $100,000?
Yes. And then there's also the uninsured, underinsured motorists coverage that is available to passengers.
Do you have an idea of what the cost is for an emergency room visit? On average?
I don't have that information, no.
I do, since I recently experienced it. A cost for an emergency room visit is about $1,000.
$1,000?
But a visit, if you, not if you're staying overnight.
Right. And then do you know if you have to stay overnight?
Well, I spent two nights in a hospital a few months ago, and the official bill from the hospital was $27,000.
And that was for two days?
For two days. It wasn't a car accident.
Right. It wasn't a car accident, it was just two days. But if someone gets into a car crash with severe bodily injury, and they have to be in a hospital for five days, then go to therapy.
Once the $50,000 in PIP, let's say $50,000 in PIP was exhausted, they would be able to bring the lawsuit and cover under the liability policy, which is $100 over $300,000. So you have additional coverage there. And that coverage, you would have to show a significant injury. So if you reach the $50,000 threshold, you may be able to show significant injury. So that liability insurance is still available. And, but there you have to, would have to depend on fault. So then you would have to bring the action against the person who was at fault, as opposed to no-fault coverage, which only covers out-of-pocket medical expenses. It covers physical therapy, there is some money for lost wages. It's intended to provide a base level of coverage irrespective of fault. Before, in New York, many years ago, did not have no-fault. And every time you were involved in an automobile accident, you brought a lawsuit, and the lawsuit would determine, the purpose of the lawsuit was to determine who was at fault, and the party that was at fault would wind up paying through their insurance carrier. No-fault created this, was supposed to create a system where we did not have the difficulty of assessing fault, and everybody would have a certain amount of coverage, $50,000 across the board. Now, if you got hit by a UPS truck, you'd have the same no-fault coverage. If you were, if you had the misfortune of being in a, in an accident in a taxi cab in Yonkers as opposed to the Bronx, the coverage would be $50,000. And there is other coverage, like I said, there is the liability.
Thank you, thank you for that. Mr. Singh?
Hello, my name is KJ Singh. I'm President Chief Operating Officer of Maya Assurance Company. We are one of few remaining insurance carriers providing liability insurance for the for-hire vehicle.
Can you move the mic closer to you, please?
We started about 20 years ago in a small office in New York City with no desk, office, or employees, and we provided insurance liability for the for-hire vehicle. It was 100% of our burka business, and we successfully have tried to do that. However, with the difficulty with the no-fault abuse, it has become very difficult. So approximately five years ago, we had decided to make the difficult decision to pull out of New York City for-hire vehicle insurance industry. The reason being, it was the no-fault abuse that was getting us. So the solutions for a policy limit and/or regulation adjustment, I believe, do need to be discussed at the same time. Unfortunately, the hard-working taxi drivers are targeted for their insurance policies. They are specifically targeted with stage accidents for the passengers. The drivers themselves do have protection, and they do need protection because they are targeted. The abuse starts at the claim level of the passengers. So the decision or the discussion to have a reduction in policy limit is to limit the no-fault abuse. If the no-fault abuse was curtailed, minimum limits could be an option. $100, $300 could be an option, or even the bigger, bigger policy limits could be an option for protection of the drivers, the passengers, the public, and the community, because that's what insurance does. I'm not here to, I'll be honest with you. As an insurance carrier, policy limits are easy. It's an acceptable decision we make to write. Would $2,550 make it easier for other carriers to enter? I believe so. For our specific example, I'm on my 10th life of my nine lives right now with conversations with DFS, so I don't know if that's going to be beneficial with an increase or decrease in limits right now. The targeted no-fault abuse is the issue. Thank you. And you had previous no-fault questions. I can more than happy to answer some of those if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Singh.
...to the EV metrics for TLC licensed vehicles, which are largely used as full-time for-hire vehicles by professional drivers as compared to other locations in New York and elsewhere in the U.S., where drivers are more likely to be part-time. While we understand the intent of the bill is to lower insurance premiums for drivers, and we support this goal, it is not clear that driver premiums will actually go down, as reduced coverage doesn't necessarily mean reduced premiums. In other words, we are concerned that the savings resulting from this bill may be kept by insurance companies rather than passed on to drivers, while needed, coverage for roadway users is reduced. We welcome further discussion on this issue with the council and stakeholders to ensure that any changes benefit drivers and all New Yorkers. Thank you again for inviting me to provide an update on the taxi industry and offer the administration's positions on the proposed bills. We look forward to continuing to work with you to ensure a healthy taxi industry and all TLC licensed industries can continue to provide safe, accessible, sustainable service for New Yorkers and visitors. I'm now happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We've been joined by Councilmember De La Rosa. I'm going to give the council member a moment to speak on her bill.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, for being here. Good morning, I'm Councilmember De La Rosa, Prime Sponsor of Intro 1050. Thank you, Chair, as Brooks Powers for convening this important discussion regarding the future of our for-hire vehicles and the public for engaging civically on this matter. The taxi and limousine industry has helped generations of New Yorkers and immigrants gain financial footing in our city. My district in northern Manhattan, along with the Bronx, are home to the majority of livery bases in the city, making today's discussion particularly important to my constituents. This industry has put students through college and led to the opening of many small businesses bolstering our economy for decades. My family, like many working-class New Yorkers, includes several hard-working taxi drivers. This industry is vital to the city's economy and identity, and we must do what we can to rebalance the rising cost, keeping it running. This crucial legislation arrives as American Transit Insurance Company, the city's leading insurer for taxis and rideshare services, teeters on the brink of collapse, jeopardizing the livelihood of over 74,000 drivers, representing over 60% of the city's driver. By lowering insurance requirement, this bill will help avert some of the fallout from ethics insolvency. With the Black Car Fund and heightened street regulations aimed at reducing collision congestion and speeding and other traffic incidents, there are ample buffers to deal with claims. Cab drivers also are more experienced drivers, spending thousands of hours a year on the road with additional oversight from our commissioners. Risking an accident means losing their livelihood. By reducing the personal injury protection requirement from $200,000 to $50,000 to match the statewide requirement, we are creating an equal standard across the state, reducing drivers' out-of-pocket costs and making the insurance market more accessible to additional carriers. We don't want anyone to get hurt and not have coverage. If we are seeing abuses in the system and fraud that has driven up costs and gone unaddressed for decades, then we also want to remedy that as lawmakers. I acknowledge that this will not be a magic remedy to the serious issues plaguing the industry. It is one tool in a toolbox that must include fixes from the state legislature and reinvestments in the industry from all partners. New York City is famously associated with taxi cabs. Today's conversation intends to take stock on this industry that has significantly changed since the insurance requirement was last raised, as you said, to $200,000 in 1998, as well as ensure the city's culture and economic icon is a strong standing to continue operating safely. Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity. Thank you, Chair. Commissioner, what legal powers does the city have in regulating the insurance market for taxi and for taxi drivers and for higher vehicles?
Yeah, so most regulations are left to the state level, but the TLC provides, can always make it a little bit more stringent. And this case, we made it more stringent to go, well, a TLC before me, made it more stringent in the 1990s from $50,000 to $200,000 in additional PIP.
PIP insurance is often cited as being more susceptible to fraud than other types of insurance. Can you explain if that is the case in your experience and why? And what steps has the city taken to mitigate this risk?
Yeah, I think overall, again, the enforcement mechanisms are with the state DFS, which is the Department of Financial Services, run by Superintendent Harris. She has done an amazing job at not only gathering stakeholders like yourself, but looking at overall policy that would get us to a better place with the American Transit Insurance Company. She recently proposed three proposals within the state budget that provides some of that, I guess, some of the changes necessary to get to a better place. And so we support that. I think, if you can repeat your specific question one more time, Councilmember.
My question is, what has the city, what steps has the city taken to mitigate the risk of fraud?
Yeah, so in addition to that, I think, to reverse the question a little bit, when I talk to stakeholders, right, what they have told me is that really, you know, those who are operating in these fraudulent enterprises, right, even if the PIP went from $200,000 to $50,000, one recent article in Insurance Insider stated that they would just cause more crashes to reach the profit margins that they need from, even if PIP went from $200,000 to $50,000.
Okay. I look forward to speaking more about that. Chair, I have one more question. That's okay? The New York PIP system is in crisis, with over 70% of the market covered by insolvent companies. Approximately half of the country doesn't have no-fault system for for-hire vehicles. Are there any of these states that don't have no-fault facing a crisis in their insurance systems, to your knowledge?
Again, I'm not an insurance regulator. I'm a for-hire market regulator. But I think where we need to look at the differences, right, is that New York City is a whole different creature than any other city, any other state in the country. We have a more professionalized driving force that operates full-time, 32-plus hours a week. Many other cities, especially outside of New York City, really operate in a different manner. They operate as gig workers, part-time. And so that's why we have so many different regulations to protect drivers in New York City. For example, minimum driver pay.
Injury protection insurance, also known as no-fault insurance, is designed to cover medical expenses and lost wages for drivers and passengers injured in traffic collisions regardless of fault. New York City currently requires TLC vehicles to purchase $200,000 of PIP insurance coverage, four times greater than the $50,000 amount required by New York State. Why has the city set the PIP insurance coverage requirements for taxis and for higher vehicles higher than the state requirement?
Yeah, so passenger vehicles only operate a certain amount of time. Here, our TLC vehicles operate a lot more time. In some cases, some of these vehicles operate over a 24-hour period, depending on the two drivers renting out a yellow taxi, for example. And so we wanted to make sure, right, and this is, this is a rule that was in place in the 90s, right, to ensure that all roadway users, passengers, drivers are protected. These vehicles are on the road much longer than the average vehicle. In every other jurisdiction outside of New York City, these drivers don't operate in a full-time capacity like New York City TLC drivers. In addition, right, the PIP also allows for, well, for claims to be paid out within 30 days or less, making sure that there is not this long legal process to ensure that people can get help for medical treatments or other types of treatments that they need right then and there.
How and why was the $200,000 requirement determined to be an adequate level?
So $200,000, again, was determined at that time. But like I said, these vehicles operate more than four times the average amount of a private passenger vehicle. And so the TLC at that time decided that $200,000 was the amount necessary, as these were full-time. were full-time drivers.
American Transit Insurance Company currently provides PIP insurance to 60% of four higher vehicles in the city and has recently reported in financial filings that it is insolvent. They have suggested that the $200,000 premium has incentivized fraudulent insurance claims. Has the TLC noticed many documented cases of PIP insurance fraud?
Yeah. The TLC is not an insurance regulator. We work with the State Department of Financial Services. We work with the governor's office on a regular basis to ensure that we look at all of these things. I appreciate the DFS for bringing together over 40 different stakeholders last year to look at the issues at hand. Atx insolvency did not happen overnight. It happened over a 30-year period, right? To reach $1 billion of insolvency means that, you know, that they were playing the market for a very long time. They were undercutting their competitors. And so this is the first superintendent that is now saying, hey, enough is enough. I'm not going to pass the buck down the road. That I could have swept this under the rug, but she's not doing that. She's taking this head-on. And in the budget bill, there are three strong solutions that help us towards the first steps of getting a healthier market.
In TLC's opinion, does the city's higher PIP insurance rate make it more likely that there will be cases of insurance fraud?
Again, I don't have the data to suggest one way or the other, but what I know is that many people have told me that this is important for bicyclists, for pedestrians, for drivers, for passengers to be protected so that in an event of a terrible crash, that many of these people can be paid for their injuries in a quick time period.
Does lowering the PIP insurance rate raise concerns that injured individuals will not be effectively compensated? Is the $50,000 coverage rate for injuries sustained in regular auto accidents sufficient in those cases?
Again, you know, I've asked for data around this from the insurance providers, from our other partners, and I haven't seen that. What we do know, though, is the basics of it, is that if there is a crash that happens and there is six or more people that were injured, like our Herald Square crash on Christmas Day, right, we know that $200,000 could be enough to cover big crashes like that. And so I just, you know, where I see the biggest potential is the what-if scenarios.
Does TLC collect any data on PIP insurance claims in the city?
We do not collect, again, we're not the insurance regulator, so we don't have that authority, but what we do collect is information on registration and insurance that every single one of our drivers have. And so they have to meet the minimum coverage requirements that we set out before their vehicles are approved to operate.
So you have no line of sight in terms of how many claims exceeded the default $50,000 coverage rate?
Again, we're not an insurance regulator, so we don't get that data.
Does TLC believe that the city's unique driving conditions warrant higher required coverage?
Like I said, you know, and I want to be completely, you know, level-headed and not say which way we should go, but I think that drivers are full-time drivers, and so they are different than other types of drivers on our roadways, and so there might need to be additional coverage requirements for vehicles that operate on the roadways a little bit longer.
If PIP insurance requirements were lowered, what would the savings look like for a typical driver?
So from my conversations, I've heard that it could save 5% on an annual basis. Again, I haven't seen that data. I haven't seen from the providers telling me that. I've also heard from others that say that any decreases might be absorbed by the insurance companies, or any decreases might not be rolled on to, back to the driver, right? But 5% can represent about $400 to $600 on an annual basis.
If a pedestrian or a passenger gets injured in a taxi crash and coverage is lowered to $50,000, will the injured person have to cover injuries beyond $50,000 out-of-pocket?
Again, I'm not an insurance regulator or insurance provider, so I can't speak on that.
Okay. I'm going to allow Councilmember Banks to add.
... and yellow cabs, but would also ensure that the many passengers who need an accessible taxi cab have access to one when they need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. My name is Beata V. Desai. I'm the executive director of the 28,000-member New York Taxi Workers Alliance. First to speak on Intro 1050, we are really concerned because, you know, as Wayne said, yellow cab owner drivers do not have workers' compensation coverage, and livery drivers only have workers' comp if the injury is a result of a crime or the, you know, or it meets the statutory definition of grave injury. And so for livery drivers and yellow cab owner drivers, PIP or no-fault insurance, it's a lifeline. It's critical. And we're talking about, you know, instances of very serious injury, as the commissioner testified earlier, compared to other insurances, it is the insurance that will deliver for you within a 30-day period. As Carmen testified, you know, telling drivers that they're going to save $400 to $600 a year if they give up this critical coverage, it's honestly such an insult. I mean, I think the real impetus for this bill is most likely that Uber and its paid-for coalition seems to believe that reducing this coverage is going to reduce the level of fraudulent claims, but there is no publicly available data, there's no scientific report from the Department of Financial Services, certainly not the TLC, certainly not the city council itself, or even from an insurance company or a watchdog group that would substantiate this claim. So we're being asked to reduce coverage with no evidence that it's even going to impact the fraudulent claims that, you know, that it's supposed to aim. So we have a lot of concern and really call for a pause on, you know, moving forward on this bill.
Thank you. And I think I missed.
... of the TLC at the time that these rules involving 1050s, Intro 1050...
You get an AI robot, dozen people through their lawyer's business cards that made... And I didn't sue anyone, but now it all makes sense to me.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the panel. Next, we're going to go online. We will hear first from Matt Doss, followed by Eric McClure.
Okay. Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, Chair Brooks Powers, good to see you and the members of the committee. My name is Matt Doss. I am the former longest-serving New York City Taxi and Limousine Commissioner and Chair. I also was the general counsel of the TLC at the time that these rules involving 1050s, Intro 1050, were passed. I'm now Transportation Technology Chair at the City University of New York at City College, where we have a research center that's USDOT-funded, doing research on this very issue. So I'm here today to give you a little bit of a short preview on where we stand with our study that I've shared with not only you, but also the bill sponsor, Councilmember De La Rosa and Councilmember Farias. I've been talking about the methodology, and I heard there were some questions earlier on the panel. I didn't watch all the testimony, but as to whether we have an objective study or anybody looking at this, the answer is yes. The UTRC has all of the region's top scholars from all of the universities that have transportation programs, and we are in the putting the finishing touches on a report, which should be out specifically on reforms, root causes, and steps forward and recommendations for trying to solve and alleviate the insurance crisis in New York City specifically. We have, the methodology includes looking at data. It looks at, we've been in touch with all types of stakeholders in the industry, and we're reaching out to more to get their perspectives and information. This is an incredibly complex issue. I was the general counsel. I wasn't the decision-maker, but I drafted the rules along with Mr. Mazur, who testified earlier as my deputy at the time. We passed these rules along with the liabilities as part of the 1998 reforms. And just a bit of history, there was a lot of controversy surrounding them. There was a taxi strike. I think the Taxi Workers Alliance was actually formed at that time along with...
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Can I just have one second to wrap up, please?
If you could, please.
Yes, we will have our comments and our recommendations out, and I would encourage you to read them, but one of the ones that we're looking at now is, and I can share with you, is that we definitely support Intro 1050 because this is a recommendation that is one part of the problem. It's a judgment call. You know, it's not going to solve the problem completely, but is a step in the right direction. And we've had 25 years of inaction, and we have an insurance crisis that needs to be solved. There's a lot of misinformation, which I'll try to, I'm going to submit written comments responding, that I hope you will read before the deadline is up. There's a lot of misinformation that has been shared here today. Reg 68 and a lot of the laws that are in place and all the different forms of compensation, including private compensation for private health insurance, is available for people. The number of people in our conclusions is very limited that benefit from this additional PIP. Additional PIP was designed for motorists who want to protect their families and buy it on top of what they have. Does not cover other pedestrians on the road, does not cover motorists and other vehicles, and the driver has ample insurance in most situations to cover their medical benefits. It does not cover pain and suffering. It is only for medical expenses, and it's only for lost wages and other types of benefits that are covered by the funds, private insurance, Obamacare. There's so few people that have ever, in our experience, reached the upper levels of the $200,000. It's a judgment call that you need to make, but if it was up to me, I would say that plus other reforms along with it will make a difference. It's not just about drivers saving some money in this term. We need to mandate telematics and do a lot of other things, and I want to congratulate you, Chair, as well as, I'd like to congratulate Councilmember De La Rosa for having the courage to move forward with this bill, because it's never a politically easy thing to do to reduce insurance. If we don't do this and other things, we're not going to have jobs or an industry to serve the people of the city. And I can tell you that based upon all the work I've done on this, on this report, which I hope you will read, that this needs to be done as a first step.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
But I'm here for questions offline, as you know, Chair, as always.
Absolutely. Thank you. And when is the report going to be final?
We're going to have it out within two weeks. We just have some more stakeholders, we're getting information, but one of the recommendations among others is to support this bill as it is. Reduce it, and let's study it, and let's see what happens, and then have an open mind in a couple of years. Fraud is rampant, but that's not the only reason for this. There are just few people that are benefiting from this. It's not, you know, it's a judgment call. Are there a few people that might not have coverage? Yes.
Thank you. So we'll connect with you offline to talk about this further.
Okay.
Next, we'll hear from...
... in each of the past three years, Quokkwan incident. We're grateful to Councilmember Gutierrez and her senior...
I am Andrew Greenblatt, the Policy Director of the Independent Drivers Guild, or IDG. Today, I'll be testifying regarding Intro 1050. Behind me are a number of drivers who've been affected by the PIP law and are here to let you know that they too support 1050. The personal injury protection market in New York for Uber and Lyft drivers is in shambles. Insolvent companies are serving 70% of the market. Rates are rocketing up, and the state is moving to raise them even faster. Drivers face higher rates if someone hits them or if their passenger opens the door into a bike lane. If, God forbid, that happens twice in six months, that driver is unable to get insurance and is therefore out of work. Imagine if someone spilled coffee on you in the office and suddenly you got a pay cut. Then someone else knocks over some papers from your desk, and now you're fired. That's the life of a driver on the insane no-fault regime. The driver never gets a trial in which they can defend themselves, they just have to live with it. Now, New York City has decided in the past to add to this misery by raising the minimum coverage for these accidents from $50,000 to $200,000. This attracts fraudsters, hucksters, and cheats, all on the back of hard-working drivers. While this bill doesn't abolish the system, it at least gets New York City out of the business of further immiserating these drivers. The IDG supports this bill and thanks Councilmember De La Rosa for her advocacy and urges the committee to move Intro 1050 along to full passage by the city council quickly. I would...
IDG, 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 IDG!
Israel Assebeto, followed by Kathleen Collins.
Starting time.
You're unmuted, Israel.
Can you see me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Okay. Good morning, Chair Brooks Powers and the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. I have been an owner-operator driving the same-for-hire vehicle for the last eight years, and my TLC and DMV license are both clean. In 2021 and 2022, I was paying 301 in liability insurance. In 2023, I was paying 334. In 2024, I was paying 387, and now for 2025, I'm being told it will be 410. I am in support of local law to amend the administrative code of the City of New York in relation to limiting the amount of liability coverage the Taxi and Limousine Commission may require for vehicles, a license, because we are the safest drivers in New York City, and the extremely high insurance we pay is burning thousands and thousands of drivers. On January 17, 2025, I sent an email to American Transit, and I was expressing the same thing I just expressed to you guys, and I was asking them why my insurance rates keep increasing when my TLC license is clean and my DMV license is clean. I never received a response from them, okay? I have also shared my email to American Transit with Councilmember De La Rosa, okay, in support of this bill. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you for your time and for listening to us today.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next, we'll hear from Roberti Gray, followed by Raul Rivera.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. May it please the council, my name is Robert Gray. I am an attorney. I have spent the past 37 years representing injured workers, including many medallion taxi drivers and four-hire-vehicle drivers, as well as various passengers, pedestrians, bicyclists, and others who are injured in vehicular accidents in the City of New York. It's regrettable that the council has not gotten a whole lot of accurate information about what covers who and when in the context of a motor vehicle accident in the City of New York. The no-fault law protects passengers, pedestrians, livery cab drivers, who are generally not covered by workers' compensation, medallion owner-operators, and in the event of a medallion driver or a black car driver who has a controverted or a contested workers' compensation case or a disallowed case, it also covers them. What does not cover black car drivers and medallion drivers is no fault if they're injured while performing a covered service. That's the role of workers' compensation, either from Hereford or from the Black Car Fund. The, so the Black Car Fund coverage, to the extent it was pointed to today, does not duplicate or overlap no-fault coverage. They're two entirely separate animals. The other thing that's not really relevant to this conversation is liability insurance, which was pointed to by some of the witnesses as a meaningful alternative to no-fault. Liability insurance is a meaningful alternative to no-fault if you don't mind waiting three or four or five years with no wage loss payments and no medical coverage before you get some money to pay those bills. I am in complete agreement with the Taxi and Limousine Commission.
Time has expired.
If you want to just finish your sentence, I felt like you admitted.
That four-hire vehicles require better coverage than... That for-hire vehicles require better coverage than typical citizens because the typical citizen is driving to and from someplace, whereas a taxi or a for-hire vehicle is in constant operation. And I also completely agree with the TLC that eliminating the additional $150,000 in no-fault coverage does not mean the drivers are gonna save a nickel. What's more likely to happen is simply shrinkflation, where the same premium gets charged for lower coverage. And lastly, with regard to American Transit being $700 million insolvent, as TLC pointed out, that's not something that occurred overnight. That's a result of American Transit's poor claim decisions and overall poor decisions over decades. And it should not be bailed out by removing insurance coverage for folks who need it.
Thank you.
And the last thing I'll just point out based on my experience.
I'm sorry, if you could just submit the remainder in writing, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, next.